We'll go ahead and call our mid-month meeting to order. Appreciate everybody coming out today. If you would, all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Tim Jenkins, please, for your invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for another day of life and the blessings of life that you've given us. And now, Lord, we come on behalf of these commissioners and the county manager, the county attorney. Lord, I pray strengthen each one and give them wisdom, Lord, that they might search your word and seek your will for every decision that's made in this county. For we're living in a day when there's many hard decisions having to be made. And we know your way is right, your way is good. So bless them, Lord, that they'll always follow you in everything that they do. And we'll praise you for it, for you are worthy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Changes on the agenda or anything? Just everybody's read over all the work sessions and meetings. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six different sets. Everybody's in agreement on that? We had asked for a motion to accept. A motion here, a second. Motion. Taking any discussion? Not all in favor? Raise your hand. Five, oh.
Do the agenda, Chairman.
Hold me back up. I was getting ahead of myself. We need approval on today's agenda. That was for the, one we just voted on was for the minutes from previous meetings. So we got a motion and a second on the agenda approval. I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, oh. Moving on down, public comment time. If anyone has any comments about what's on the agenda, feel free to come forward. It's time.
Have to be on the agenda. This is your only opportunity for public comment.
Anyone has anything, come on. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name, please, at the podium, please.
My name is Tanya Oliver Alessi. I'm here because I am really upset that the speed limit on 93 and 221 has been lowered from 55 to 45. I'm not sure why you guys did that. I don't know if it was because there was a pretty bad accident on that road lately. But, you know, accidents happen all the time on every road that there is or has ever been. And I don't know if it's because there has been so many people moving here lately that honestly don't know how to drive. I've been frustrated on that road for some time now. Okay? I have to drive the entire length of 93 to and from work. I have done that since I got my driver's license. I have, I was, I have lived here my whole life. You know, I did driver's ed on that road, okay? And lately, it has been so infuriating because these people, oh my gosh, like, they almost come to complete stops and curves. They brake going up hills. It's like, I don't understand why they moved here if they're terrified of the roads. So instead of, you know, lowering the speed limit to 45, which, you know, their top speed is 35, why didn't you do 35? I propose that we give driving lessons for how to drive, I'm serious, in the Appalachian Mountains. I mean, I thought about putting these people in my car myself and showing them that you can go 55 on that road and not stop in curves. You know, I mean, it's not that hard. I don't understand why it's that hard. And I've been looking at, you know, their comments on Facebook and they're like, oh, the road needs to be, like, widened. Are you guys gonna widen every road in the county? I mean, how much is that gonna cost? I don't understand why I have to be punished now because they move here and they can't, you know, adapt to how things are here. I mean, my dreams of homeownership have already been squashed, by the way, because if you haven't noticed, like, houses are selling for, like, 200% of tax value right now. I am upset, okay? I don't think that it's fair. I mean, I have enough trouble getting to work on time, you know? And southern hospitality, by the way, like, where did that go? I mean, I've been, you know, I get behind elderly people on that road who have lived here their whole life. And if they have a row of, like, 15 cars behind them and they're driving 35, they will pull over and let people go by. I mean, and these people don't do that. I tried to pass somebody on that road one morning in the passing zone, and they sped up to 65 miles an hour while I was trying to pass them so, so that I couldn't go by, you know? I mean, and since, I mean, it is just, it's infuriating. I don't think it's fair to local people who have driven that road since they were 15 years old for the speed limit to be lowered to 45. I don't get it. Why? I mean, what are you guys gonna do next? I mean, DOT, what are you gonna do next? Are you gonna, I mean, if you're gonna widen the road, you better make it four-lane because, you know, this is just unacceptable. It really is.
Appreciate your comment.
I was not laughing at you.
It was okay.
I was laughing with you.
Okay.
And my wife will tell you that I have echoed every comment that you've just made only with additional adjectives that I will not repeat here.
Thank you. That means a lot to me. Okay. Thank you.
Very much.
My name is David Jones. I live in the Pine and Creek community, and I am by no means a public speaker. This is my first time before the board, so excuse my rambling. But I totally agree with this young lady with everything that she has said, and that is the reason that I am here, to voice my opposition to the speed limit changes on 93. I have driven 93. I have driven responsibly, and by the good grace of God, I have not had an accident on 93. And I'm like her, I wonder why, all of a sudden, the change in the speed limit. Obviously, there is no public announcement made. I'm driving back from Sparta, and all of a sudden, there's a sign that says 45. I don't understand why. And so, that's why I'm here. I would like to know why, what the basis is for the change, and what can we do, if anything, to reverse it? I would like to say thank you to the board for allowing me to stand here this morning. However, I am just a little bit disappointed. I was hoping it would be in the evening meeting, because I think there are a lot more people that oppose than are here this morning. And I think if it'd been on an evening meeting, you would see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to come here and speak with you. I have been on your side of the bench, and I had tomatoes thrown at me and been patted on the back, so I hope we all work in harmony today. The reason I'm here, I'm president of Sparta Lions Club, and there's been talk about the 911 communications center taking our building. I know that's been resolved, but I was told recently we were that close to getting it. And then the roof needs replacing. And in your public comment, in your meeting last time, it was said that y'all own the property there. And we do not agree that you own it. We own it jointly. It's a community property that will always be used as a picnic area, pavilion, for family functions, and for our meetings. I'm gonna take just a minute to tell you about, the Lions Club was chartered in 1944. And we did projects, not me personally, I was born in 45, but between all three of us, we have 250 years of age. We have 125-plus years of service to the Lions Club. So there's a lot of experience here, a lot of knowledge. We've done wombless, womenless weddings, horse shows. We did the food pavilion at fairgrounds. We've done auctions, golf tournaments. We sold brooms door-to-door to raise money to do what we've done. The first thing we did was bought the property where the library and the community college is today. We later, we built a ball field there for the county to use. And later, we sold that to Troutman as the county began to build their own. And Troutman, I guess, in turn, gave it to the county, or y'all bought it from him. But anyway, that was one of our first projects. That was eight acres of land. We gave $50,000 to, for the hospital the Lions Club put up, out of money that we raised from the horse shows and whatever, and sold that property, I believe. We were instrumental in getting the fairgrounds property donated. And we built the bleachers. Russell Sheetz spent a year over there building those bleachers, Lions Club member. We built the concession building. I'm not sure the county's involvement and all that at that time, but it was more than we could manage, so the county took it over, which was a good thing. We aged out of running the concessions, as you can see, 250 years here. We, we just got where we weren't able, and the, there wasn't a lot of young people that were interested in joining the Lions Club. We have probably five new members this year, though, so we are beginning to grow again. We bought 15 acres over near the New River Golf Course and built a pavilion there. Y'all familiar with that, I suppose? And that was a picnic area for the public to use and the pavilion. We sold that. In 1973, we paid $35,000 for Sam Brown Mountain and the land where the Lions Club building is now. And with the help of students from the high school, we built that building with lumber from, as I was told from Buck, I believe, out of the old gymnasium. And the kids poured the concrete. I guess my question is, why do you think you own it? But I'm gonna turn it over to George, and he can say what he thinks. I got some facts here ye may or may not know. Of course, we're not here asking for a deed, that there's a deed to the property, and I think it's like Recreation, Allegheny Recreation Commission. We feel the property, of the, it's a community, it's, the property is out of the communities. Since the Lions Club bought the land and was responsible for the bill being built, we feel we have, we have a real voice here. When the Lions did this, our intention was to have a covered picnic, a covered picnic area, playground for the kids, a place for the gatherings and birthday parties and reunions and meetings and so forth. And of course, a place for the Lions meetings and, and storage for our, for our inventory, like flags, brooms, and so forth. This has worked for 50 years. We have occupied, maintained the building, and paid the utilities and so forth. The Recreation Department has maintained the grounds, which has made a wonderful partnership. We feel this property is of Allegheny County citizens, and we are the caretakers. And I want Buck to speak, and then we'll talk, we need to talk about the roof, I guess.
Thank you for allowing us to come, talk to you this morning, represent the Sparta Lions Club. Some of the things the Sparta Lions Club does Bobby didn't mention, we pick up trash on the Twin Oaks Mountain from the Bledsoe Creek Road to the Lawn Mac Road. One of the primary thing, projects that we have is aid to the blind. We have a meal once or twice a year for the VIPs, that's Visually Impaired Persons, and serve a meal there. We also take, we usually take someone from the county to our summer camp down on Lake Norman and spend a week there. And that's something that very, very gratifying. We're very pleased to, to do. As far as the aid to the blind, I guess that's our primary, primary project in the county. But we've used the pavilion, we call it the Lions Club Pavilion, for many years, and we hope you'll see fit to allow us to continue to use it for, for what we're doing. Scouts meet there. Individuals can meet there, have a family get together, various things like that. Every year, we, we have been, we call the hometown heroes dinner there for the police department, sheriff department, highway patrol, sort of honor them for their, their service. I'm the oldest member, active member in the club at present. I do remember back when we used to meet at the community building back in the, in the 50s. And then, as Bobby mentioned, we bought property across from the New River Golf Club, built a pavilion there. We sold it to James Miller and received almost enough to buy the property in Sam Brown's At, we were able to build the building, the help of Muncie Crafts and his class at school. A lot of the material from that building was taken from the old schoolhouse that was torn down, the old two-story building that was torn down. building, that was torn down. We're proud of our club. We don't have as many members as we one time had, but Sparta Lions Club has been recognized as being one of the most active clubs in, in, in the state. We are, we have, from our, our club has had this, District Governors, numerous ones, starting back with Left Jones. We hope you'll work with us and, and continue, continue to own and, and use the Lions Club Pavilion. Thank you.
Say one more thing. Buck mentioned our, the dinner last year because of COVID. We're not doing it this year. What we did was a drive-by on the streets. We had the fire trucks, Rescue Squad, Police Departments, sheriffs, to line up on Main Street, and we had people to drive by, give them a gift card for a restaurant. It not only helps them have a free meal, that's whatever you want, it's our merchants that are struggling, who, October 25th, 7 o'clock, if you'll head up Main Street and take their hand.
Building, the building has got to have a new roof on it. We've been patching on it, and, and, but the signals, I don't, I don't know if the roof's ever been changed in 50 years, has it, Buck? Do you ever remember it being changed?
Just saying.
Wish I had his memory. I can't remember like he does. But anyhow, we've got some bids on it, and we're willing, we're willing to pay for it, but we, we, we ask you guys to help us with half of it. But, but we got to get it done, and we've had three bids on it. One bid is from out of town, and they're the only ones that got insurance and, and license. The two others are in, in the county. They, they're willing, they, they can build up to $30,000 without license, and they don't have insurance. But we still would like to see the money stay in the county and give the, give the bid to the, to the, to one of those guys. We can get them to sign a waiver that we wouldn't be responsible for, for any accidents they might have, or anything like that. That's kind of where that stands.
We'll take all that consideration that is coming up on down in general business about the, about the roof, Lions Club roof.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll talk further about that at that point. Thank you, gentlemen, for all you do. You've got a good organization.
George has 50 years with the Lions Club. Buck has 70 years. Quite a consti-
Wish I had his memory.
We all do.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Being known, we'll close the comment portion and move on down to presentation of the board, the local line department transportation, Mr. Morning, sir. We appreciate you coming up today.
Glad to be here.
Knew you, you didn't know you needed a flag jacket.
Over the football helmet. Like I said, I'm Joseph Woody with the DOT. I'd got an email one day last week about, about NC 93, where the speed limit had been lowered. Questions you have, anything I can answer for you, my reasoning behind it?
Sir, and public comments, why this wasn't done at a nighttime meeting? I live out on 221, and I experienced the same thing. I went to town in the morning, speed limit was 55. I came back in the afternoon, it was 45. So I called county manager and asked him to have somebody from DOT to speak, because I live out there, and then my phone started ringing that same night, as to why this happened. So, that's why you're here during the daytime. If this needs to be continued to a nighttime meeting, I'd be more than happy to ask for somebody to come back again. But I would like to ask a few questions, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
First of all, why was it done? I'll give you two or three questions, then we'll back up. Who made this decision? What will it take to get it reversed and put it back the way that it should be? The way that it's been, I'm not gonna say how many years that I've been driving it, but it's been close to 60 years. I've driven that road numerous times, day and night, and so has most of the people in this room. I know that there's a reason, but for the laypeople, I don't understand that reason. So I go back to my first question, as to why it was done.
Back in 2019, we had got a bunch of different sections of road. My sections included Allegheny, Surrey, and Yakon County. The sections I had was NC 93, US 221, a section in US 21 coming up the mountain, and then NC 18. Our Assistant Regional, Assistant Western Regional Safety Engineer rode these roads, made recommendations. I have his recommendation here. He recommended 45 miles an hour. I've traveled 93, not as much as you folks up here in the mountains. Section from Twin Oaks, from the dairy, the old dairy farm, back towards Piney Creek Post Office. It's a curvy section. There's speed panels up that tell you it's not the speed limit, but these speed panels, we advise you to take that curb at that speed, 45. After driving it, it's an air road. After driving it, I felt like that it was, he was correct in what he found. I can make you a copy of this and have it back to you. I'm the one who wrote the ordinance, or actually, he wrote the ordinance, and I said it was good, my boss approved it, and we sent it to Riley. Was your third question?
The second question was, was there a single individual that made this choice?
No, he was a group-
Or is it a committee, or?
Western Regional asked that we look at it after he had looked at it.
They actually drove the road?
Yes. His office is, I think, down in Shelby, but he covers about 15 counties. There's two of them. There's an Assistant Engineer, and then the Assistant Safety Engineer, and then the Assistant Safety Engineer.
Third part of the question, what will it take to get it reversed and put it back the way that it should be?
Back to statutory 55, or ordinance 55. Statutory 55 means you would not have any 55 mile per speed limit signs on the road, because in the state of North Carolina, the road ain't posted at 55 miles per hour, or as conditions permit.
The, after this sign popped up overnight, with no warning to the general public, no discussion with county leaders that I know of, I was going home that day, and the state trooper was coming back towards Sparta. No siren on, no lights flashing. He was doing well, well over 60 miles an hour. He drives that road every day. He knows that road. He knows the curves. Coming to, coming to meeting this morning, I've got one passing lane. There's DOT tractor in front of me, then a DOT pickup in back of the tractor. They're doing about 30, 35 miles an hour. There's no way to pass these people, because now I'd be breaking your speed limit. I just think it's, personally, I think it was a bad choice, and I would urge the citizens, especially those that live out there, to do everything we can do to get it put back the way that it belongs. Now, I'm not, I love DOT. They do a great job, and I'm not talking about our people that work here and know the roads. But we've got places in this county that need guardrails put up for safety of nothing else but school buses. We've got secondary roads that need culverts put in, that need gravel put on them, and here they are wasting money putting up speed limit signs for 45 miles an hour. I just disagree with your choice. That's all.
Got a quick question. Has there been an uptick in accidents? I mean, usually, speed is related to accidents.
Right. Now, like I said, all this has been going off two years, and I've got a crash study that was done from 11-1. We do them in five-year increments. That's what we do. And this was done by the Western Region and Senate. This is not one of mine. 11-1, 2014, to 10-31, 2019. Had 21 accidents in nine miles.
Nine miles.
Now, what was that timeframe again?
Five-year period.
Five-year period.
One Class A, two Class Bs, no fatal. But in the past, you have had, I think there was three or four, in the last, I'm gonna say 10, it was 10 or 11 years, fatal accidents. I know you had one when you go past Elk Creek Baptist Church, or Elk, whatever it is that's top of the hill. You go around a curve to your left, you go back down, before you get to the bridge, curve to the right. You had one down there, and back up the hill on the other side of the bridge. I can't remember where the other two were, but you have had, I mean, you're gonna have accidents, and there's nothing we can do to stop accidents. Speed, I mean, I've got 55, 50, 55, 69, 55, 55, 55, 65, 55. Driving the curves.
I sympathize these people. I live on the other end of 93, too, and it's plum acroving. No warning, no nothing, but we've all been here, the most of us, all our life, and it's been 55 mile an hour all my life. And back in the day, there's a lot more passing zones on 93. You've got one basically on each end of 93 now, and that's, that's in the 45-mile zone. And I think we seriously need to look at getting this turned around, being honest with you. Commissioner John?
Well, you know, I think the biggest frustration that we all have, now granted, I'm 72. I've been driving since I was 16. I crawled in the wrecker with my dad from the time that I could get on the running board. And I have picked up, I ran the wrecker for a short period of time whenever I was here. I've picked up wrecks off 93, and there's been a couple of ditches I've cleared out 93, on 93. But the frustration is that, granted, you have valid safety reasons to bring your speed down, but what we don't see is road improvements that would justify bringing the speed up. And, you know, are you gonna, we aren't, we don't have any plans for these roads to be widened, taking some of the curves out, and I don't want you to take some of the curves out, because I get a kick on running some of them. But, I mean, this is part of our frustration, and I've gone, I've gotten behind these people, and if a trooper had caught me, I would have pled guilty, because I was running faster than I should have, and I passed in places that I shouldn't have. And that's part of the frustration, because we're used to it. I mean, up here, these people that are beginning to move into the county are, my God, sometimes I think they don't realize that they've got a suspension, and that they can go around the curve at something above 35 miles an hour. But, you know, you're, you're between the devil and a rock. You've got safety considerations behind you, and they are valid. You've got, if we've had 21 accidents in five years in a nine-mile stretch of road, that says it all right there. But at the same time, the community has a need to, to be able to travel these roads at a speed that we feel that is justified. So the only thing that, we, we can petition, and we can draw up petitions, and you can come before us, and we can recommend that the speed limit go up, but you gotta recognize that the state of North Carolina has a valid reason for doing this. If the accident record supports this action, it's gonna be hard to get over it. So, the next thing that we can do is start a raising cane with our elected representatives for more money to come in to widen and straighten roads in this area. But I'll be honest with you, I'm reluctant to go against safety. I've cut people out of cars. Seen the results of the accidents. First wreck I remember going on, sailor killed on Jane Taylor Mountain. Dad didn't know that the body was still there, but I crawled up in the daggone thing to kick the car out of gear. And he had gone through the windshield, and it was a six-inch piece of flesh hanging off the mirror, and he wondered where the blood came from whenever I got back in the cab and the pickup. Scared him to death. I like to see people hurt. I've got to support you for the safety reason, and it may be a pain that we've got to follow these people, and they'll never get educated, and they'll just keep on getting away. The biggest thing that torques me off is, whenever you get behind them, they won't pull off and let you go. That would help enormously. But this is a no-win situation. This is a no-win situation, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'll shut up.
Is 1845 all the way to, 18 South, is it 45 all the way?
Yes, sir, but I have paperwork right here, and I, when I talked to Ms. Todd, I told her, you know, sometimes I have to answer certain people, too. You know, sometimes you get things you don't want to do it, and, you know, sometimes you have to do it. I mean, I've got a road, it's not in Allegheny, but I've got a section of road in Surrey right now, that crash index was out the roof, over 900, and four tenths of a mile.
Excuse me?
Four tenths of a mile was over 900 crash index. 14 crashes, four tenths of a mile. I got a dead 18-year-old kid. Well, I'm, I'm changing it. It's inside of city limits. Highway 18, I've got it right here, basically two miles north of NC 88, to 1.63 miles east 18. Twenty-three, almost 24 miles, one way, 45 mile an hour. Told Ms. Todd on the phone, if this gets done, it will not be by me, because I've done, said my piece with it. So sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do on different roads, stretches of road. You know, the 21 section coming up the mountain, I don't see a reason changing it. You know, I can't, I don't cover Wilkes County. I'm out of Wilkes County. The section that's in Wilkes on 21, that's not my decision.
We all agree with safety. We're not, we're not questioning safety, but it's, it, you know, it's just, it's been 55 all these years.
I understand that.
Four wrecks a year is about what that's average, and I don't know if that's wrecks in the wintertime due to slick roads, or wrecked wrecks in the summertime.
93.
93. I know there's a few spots on 93 that captures a lot of wrecks in the wintertime, just, just due to no sunshine.
Guaranteed income for the record.
You had two rollovers, you had two rear ends, you had two side swipes, you had- Had two rollovers, you had two rear ends, you had two side swipes, you had one angle, you had fourteen, um, dextrogites. Most of your crashes come in July. On Fridays.
Hurry to get home.
I mean, I'm being honest with you.
Statistics. You have the statistics.
Seven to eight in the morning, twelve to one. Really too good. Somebody help me with military time here. Twenty-two hundred to twenty?
Ten-twenty-two.
Yeah. That's your high, fourteen percent, fourteen percent, fourteen percent. I mean, I can break it down further. Day, dark, wet conditions, what kind of vehicles.
Does ninety-three outpace other roads for wrecks?
It's a little bit higher. What hurts ninety-three is your ADT count's nine-fifty. Nine-fifty, your annual daily traffic. Eighteen is twenty-four to twenty-five hundred. I don't think they've been one done since twenty-nineteen. They ain't got the new criteria for it.
Any kind of compromise that can be made instead of just black and white, it's forty-five all the way, maybe just the heavy areas where it's very dangerous, we could make it forty-five and then fifty-five unless otherwise posted?
I mean, I can, I can go back and look at it. I mean, I have no problem. I mean, first and foremost, you know, the three counties I have, Allegheny is by far my favorite county. So I like to, you know, I work for the people just like y'all work for the people. This is the way we do things. This is the way, when we write an ordinance, this is how it works. We write the ordinance. If it's not inside the city limits and we're not, we don't got to have a, send anything to the municipality, to them sign off on it. Then we do the ordinance, we send it to Raleigh, it comes back, we write it up, and they go change it. Need it be speed limit, need it be no parking, wherever it is. You know, I mean, that's, that's the way it's been done when it was called the Highway Commission, as far as my knowledge goes. But yeah, I mean, I will be more happy to look back at it. I mean, I will say there is a straight stretch from one thirteen to Pine Creek, the best office. There is intersection signs there with a forty-five panel. So there's my reasoning why, because you're coming up on an intersection.
Chairman, would it help you in these efforts to change certain portions back to fifty-five if we had a resolution from the county commissioners in supporting that effort?
I'm going to say it ain't going to hurt. Like I said, I mean, I have somebody that I have to answer to as well, and I'm sure all y'all know Mr. Pettyjohn, Division eleven. So, he's an engineer.
When you're kind of reviewing sort of how this came about, came to be, it sounds like it started with the Western Regional Manager driving these roads who lives in Shelby. I mean, what did that drive consist of? Was it, did he just pass through them one day, or did he do a series of events?
They get these...
Obviously, I would think you would know this, but, you know, when I go to an unfamiliar area that I don't live in, regardless of what the speed limit is, I'm going to adjust because it's an unfamiliar road. And then all the locals are very familiar with the roads. So I just, how does, how does his tour of the roads happen? I mean, what kind of a process does he put into that?
He gets his roads from Raleigh. They send him packet for his divisions. And I will say his other divisions might be ten or twelve, Iredale County and Alexander and Lincoln, some of them. But these are the sheets we go by for reducing speed. Ninety-three was the first one I got in Allegheny County. I got eighteen. So he's got on here, road classification supports low and speed, driveways, crashes, shoulders, driving investigation. Operation Speed Study, I mean, it's him driving it with a ball bank indicator. And when you've got a ball bank indicator, it's a mechanism that goes on your dashboard. And by MUTCD standards, you've got certain criteria when you set that ball bank, you go around that curve at a certain speed. If it gets out, then you drop the speed. You go to fifty mile an hour, go back through that curve. If it's still out of spec, you back up, turn around, go back, you go to forty-five until you get in that ball bank. I mean, we have to look at it, too, if somebody loses their life out there on that road. We've got it fifty-five mile an hour. We missed something. It's come up. Can you justify if you go to court?
How do we justify moving speed limit up on interstates from sixty-five to seventy and the fatality rates go up there?
Shoulders with the roads.
You had indicated another road in another county on a crash index you referenced of nine hundred. What would the index be? Is there an index rating for ninety-three?
For ninety-three, I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you.
Ideas on where it would be?
State index rate for that road should be somewhere roughly between one, I'm guessing here, one-twenty to one-twenty-five, one-thirty, NC route rule.
Curious to know, you know, what that is relative to the one you just referenced being, it sounds like very severe, and it just now getting changed. The other thought is, is where, I mean, we as the locals will drive these roads, and as you say, there are signs up there, recommended speed of forty-five. And that tool that you referenced, it's got the swing going around the curve. You know, as locals, we have always, whether there's a posted sign there or not, we tend to travel at a speed that we know is safe for that curve. So I think that's where the, you know, where we're struggling locally is just we're accustomed to these roads and driving at a safe speed at the right place where it's safe. And then, and I'm not so sure that having a lower speed, you know, that we're not going to have people trying to pass people and actually create situations where, you know, conditions may be worse as far as wrecks go. I mean, it's debatable. I don't know, you know, I could be wrong. But also, I would like to close with saying that, you know, to the public, the county commissioners, we don't do roads. Those are, that's what the DOT does, and then in town, the town does roads. But we actually have no, I hope it's been made clear that, you know, there was no, they didn't come to us and ask us, or we didn't go to them and tell them to do this. And they're doing their job. And I respect the job. It's a tough place to be in. But I would like, you know, as you've heard here, I would really love for you to, I think we all would, would love for you to revisit that and see if there's some room to take it back. And the other comment I want to make is, we have been struggling, and I'm kind of reluctant to go here, but it's an issue that's having a couple of intersections here in town that we've really been struggling with, and the numbers, we think, are through the roof as far as crashes and whatnot, and I'm speaking of the bypass. And since being there, and the challenge is, is the study you referenced is like, you know, several years ago, before any changes are implemented. With what we're seeing on the bypass, how long is that going to have to go on before there's, if anything, is implemented there to try to, you know, augment or slow down or stop the challenges, the wrecks, the loss of life that we've been experiencing there?
Agree with you on it. We have looked into it. I don't have anything on it because I was not prepared for that today. I thought it was coming up here to talk about ninety-three. I mean, I'd be more than happy, you know, I can get it.
The reason I bring that up is because when you're talking about wrecks and what's going on and how you look at the roads, that's not the only one that, you know, that, me, I think we have a more severe issue in other places. And I've reluctantly brought that up, but I think it's going to, it's going to come back up. I mean, we're going to end up, you know, visiting that sooner rather than later from the public pressure. And it's warranted, I think, so.
Just want to bring that up. We would love to have you come back and talk about the, especially the Grandview Drive and bypass intersection there. There's, I get more calls about that than I do anything else. We're headed for a tragedy there if something...
There's a lot of people in this room that have been driving that road for fifty, sixty years. Why now has it become such a concern to change that to forty-five? And the other thing, I'm stating that, did you miss something if there's a wreck and somebody gets hurt? Well, if you look at the whole state, people get hurt every day. So did you miss something throughout the whole state? You just can't blame this on ninety-three, on two-twenty-one. I know what you're saying. I deal with the Health Department. We do the best we can do. Did we miss something? But I don't think that holds water right here with this conversation. Common sense has left most of this country. And I think people that have driven this road for decades have that common sense to slow down when it rains, to slow down when it snows, to slow down when they're meeting two big vehicles. I just don't think that one person riding through ninety-three and two-twenty-one, I don't know how many trips I missed, how many trips he made, but, you know, he should have ridden with somebody that was a local, and he should ride these roads daily. I just, overall, I disagree with the decision.
Realizing all you can do is just pass it on, please advise them, you know, we need, I'm getting calls on the bypass. That is the most concern. Nobody's ever called me about ninety-three until you lowered the speed limit. But as a matter of fact, I thought we had a individual that was going to be here that had a family member that was T-boned down here. She gave us a call, and I'm sure every member got a call from her that she was bringing it in to talk about this. Now, we are concerned about it. It's an inconvenience on ninety-three, but we can definitely see that we've got a couple of areas, especially on that bypass, that's going to, that we are getting calls on, and we feel that we have justification for our concern. Thank you. It's, you know, I was joking whenever I asked you if you felt like bringing in your flak jacket, next time you may want to bring a helmet with it.
I'd deal with worse.
Anything else? We appreciate you taking time to come and talk with us today.
One more thing, is it possible to have, in a nighttime meeting, have DOT come back and go through the bypass and revisit this ninety-three and two-twenty-one, where we can have all this information together?
Would DOT be willing to come to six o'clock meeting?
I'm willing. I mean, I would say that maybe my boss and Mr. Pettyjohn, I mean, you are citizens of the state of North Carolina, and we're here to do what we can do.
Appreciate that. We'll be in contact. Give us some information of what we can do to maybe look at changing this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do think that we need to get a consensus of the opinion by the commissioners supporting him in looking at raising the speed limited areas that you can raise them.
If you've got a concern on any road, lowering or raising, I mean, Pine Swamp, for instance, it's a secondary road. It's fifty-five miles an hour. I bet you can't drive at fifty-five.
I wouldn't take that bet.
Not with you, any of the four of them.
Is that the consensus of the board? Everybody? Okay.
Our next meeting.
Next meeting and the portions being fifty-five mile an hour? Where they can get you, yeah? Drew can get excited. Okay. Next, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Carter, a little presentation.
Would it be okay if I go to the podium?
Sure.
I've sat and thought about this. This may be the first time I've ever been at this podium. So maybe we ought to celebrate that for just a minute. Normally, I'm hidden over there. So thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I want to point out, I think it's great to look out in the audience, and we see the seats fill. You know, that's, to me, that's what government represents. And if you look really hard, you see a diversity of people here, and each one has their own interest, and I just think that's worth, you know, pointing out. And if you look really hard, you'll see several county employees sitting out there. And, you know, they, they too are an integral part of this operation, and they don't always get the opportunity to come to these meetings and see what's going on firsthand. So for all of you here, employee-wise, we certainly appreciate that as well. Now, you know, depending on who you ask, we're either coming out of a pandemic or we're going back into one. And neither is something that any of us are proud of. But what we can be proud of is how we have handled things throughout this pandemic. And I'll go on to say that, you know, I've been here a year, eight months, seventeen days. I can tell you all the logistics to it. But what I've seen is we have a really good team here assembled. And, you know, that's something to be proud of. And everybody that works for the county, they do a tremendous job. And every time I have the opportunity, I try to get that across to them. Now, granted, my technique is always a little questionable because I'll pick at you as much as I'll praise you. But for the most part, I think everyone understands that. Now, you know, today, we want to take opportunity and recognize two individuals, and not because of any differences or lax on anyone's part. But throughout this pandemic, we've relied on two individuals specifically to help keep us safe, day in and day out, in all the facilities. And I think back to when I came, we didn't have these two individuals, nor did we have an everyday functioning for what they do. And without those individuals, I don't know how we would have gotten by the way that we have. Now, I will tell you that I owe these two individuals a biscuit. And I was supposed to have brought them a biscuit this morning. But I got this message saying that one of them may not be here today. Now, I'm sure that helps the audience. Who knows what I'm talking about, understand what I'm talking about? And that's why there were some chuckles and giggles that came from the roads back here. But fortunately, we had a, we had an opportunity to have one of them come in. And no, I do not have a biscuit for either of these ladies this morning, but I will have tomorrow, should they be here. But I want to take the opportunity and recognize two people that have really, I think, excelled at what they've done. They've kept us safe. I go into every facility that we have, and all I hear is praise. And, you know, that's just, in government life, you don't hear that a lot. So I think that I've surprised them, I'm not sure. One of them's giving me a really bad look right now, so I think I've at least got her. But I'd like to ask Brenda Trevitt and Dawn May to come forward, if they would, for just a moment. Although I am a little wide, you don't have to stand behind me to hide. So what we have done as a Board of Commissioners, as a manager's office, and you can look out in the audience and you see several of your supporting team players out here. and you see several of your supporting team players out here. And there are those that are not here that wish they could have been here, but duty calls sometimes. But we wanted to recognize you both. And what we've done is we've put together a plaque, and this happens to be Brenda's. And we have that one for you. And I'll give you the bags to put them back in, because I know you'll find a use for them. But that one is for you as well. And I will tell you on at least my part, it has been an honor and privilege to have you all working here at Allegheny. And I certainly appreciate the work and service that you do. And I'm not going to sell it with me. I'm going to allow our commissioners or anyone else that may want to say their token of appreciation and force you to stand up here just that much longer. So, here is your bag. Here's your bag. And it's all good, right? Thank you, ladies. And I'll hand the bag over to our chair.
I'd like to thank you, ladies. You do a superb job. Things really changed around here, and y'all have helped get us through the COVID and kept us healthy. We certainly appreciate it, because you girls work hard. I've seen both of you, your shirts wet, just working like the dickens. We appreciate it. John, I'll start to the left.
I'd like to thank you. A lot of times, we fail to realize that the smallest things have the biggest impact. And it may seem small, but it has had a very large impact in this county. I know it hasn't been easy. It's been a tremendous amount of pressure on you, but thank you.
Thank you for doing a thankless job. We really appreciate you, and it has not gone unnoticed.
I think what you all have done over these few months, these, the COVID months, has allowed the government, our local government, to continue work. And that's a big, big deal to the people of the county. We know that when we come in here, that basically we're safe. When you go to any other buildings that y'all work on, those people have confidence that that building is safe. The only other thing, I'm not sure about the trash can in Michael Carter's office. I think he needs a bigger trash can. I'm just not sure.
Smaller one.
Oh, okay.
I would just add to that. Thanks for filling what was already, what was a big need before COVID, but became even a bigger one. And it sounds like you have.
Thank you, ladies. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Well, since they didn't leave, I'd think they were going to look for a hamburger at noon.
Next up, Charter of Freedom, Mr. Ron Lewis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and Manager, and Madam Attorney. It's quite obvious that you have a very caring and community here that all pull together in the same way, and we're here to maybe even advance that a little bit. I'm David Streeter. I'm the Education Director for Foundation Forward, and this is my friend and colleague, Ron Lewis. He is the Treasurer and Front Person for Foundation Forward. Please forgive my voice. I'm getting over a cold, not COVID, but a cold. So, anyway, it's a little razzy right now. But I'd like to start off for just a moment. I'm going to be the opening act. Remember, we used to go to a concert, and you'd have the opening act you'd never heard of? And then the main act would come on, and it would be someone like The Beatles or Elton John or whatever. Well, that will be Mr. Lewis, okay? And then I will sum some things up at the very end. But anyway, just a couple of things, as in the first slide here, settings versus monument. We do not build monuments. We build settings. They are the charters of freedom of the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. Collectively, they are the charters of freedom. Those documents give us all the liberties and freedoms that we enjoy every day. Those documents are very live and well. They're the ones that give the power of our country to operate, such as this venue right here. Also, the courts, from the lowest courts dealing with parking tickets and speeding tickets, all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States. Because they are living documents, a memorial is something that pays an honor or homage to something, or a person, or event that is no longer with us, is dead, is deceased, or it's gone on by. Because the documents are living documents, monument does not fit the definition of what we do. So therefore, we call them settings or permanent displays. And if I could get you to go to the next slide, please. We are also not a political or a religious organization. We are neutral in all of those facets. We're here to serve all the people. We like to be open 24/7 to the public with a lot of access, and above everything else, we are an education organization. And at the end of the presentation, I'll come back and tell you a little bit more about what my duties are as the Director of Education and dealing with the other entities in your community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Lewis, my colleague, and he'll go through the majority of the presentation with you. Ron?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, as a county manager for over thirty years, this morning brought back a lot of memory. I know what it's like to sit in and hear the concerns of your citizens. I want to start out by apologizing. And Commissioner Luthman, I'm going to talk mostly to you, if that's okay with you. Because I was here about eighteen months ago and made a presentation, and things were going good. And we started being called all over the country. To this date, we have built twenty-four charters of freedom, no, excuse me, twenty-five charters of freedom in North Carolina. Our goal over the next three years is to build out the other counties, the remaining seventy-five, so that all hundred counties in North Carolina have the charters of freedom. Now, in addition to being called all over the country, we're in ten different states now. We're as far west as Utah, and we're, I can't name all the, I probably could, but we're in South Dakota, Nebraska, Illinois, Indiana, Virginia. That's why I owe you an apology. Our original business plan was to build out all of North Carolina first, then go into South Carolina, there are forty-six counties in South Carolina, to build out South Carolina before we were pulled all over the country. But that just did not happen. However, we are now back to our original business plan, and we are determined, over the next three years, to build out those remaining seventy-five counties. Now, on our map in our office, where we color in the county when it's finished, I have a void in the northwest corner of North Carolina. And with your help, I'm going to color that county in, that beautiful county being Allegheny. We want to be here, in fact, we could probably construct as soon as is September, October. We want to get done before the winter comes. So if everything falls into place, Mr. Manager, then we'll be ready to send the construction crew up here and begin our construction. Next slide, please. Foundation Forward is a nonprofit. We realized soon on after we started building charters of freedom that it was going to be expensive. In order to do that, we needed a 501(c)(3). Move to the next slide, please. Has anyone been to the National Archives Building? Now, one more time, I want to see that. In fact, I might need to get a picture of that. I don't know that I've had, ever had eighty percent of a board that's been to the National Archives Building. However, I'm going to turn to the audience and ask, did anyone see the movie The National Treasure? I thought I'd get a lot more hands that went up. In the movie The National Treasure, they steal the Declaration of Independence from the National Archives Building in Washington. Next slide. As you go down this long corridor, you walk through these big brass gates, and suddenly you're right there in the, in this marvelous room where the charters of freedom are stored and housed. The Declaration of Independence is on the left, the four pages of the Constitution are in the middle, and by the way, it's just four pages. And the original proposed Bill of Rights is on the right. Next slide. You might imagine that the documents, over age, aren't in great shape. As hard as our country has worked to preserve the documents and to restore them and to keep them, they're in many places hardly legible. Of all the documents, the proposed Bill of Rights is the worst. Next slide. We had two founding fathers. Benjamin Franklin, of course, is my favorite. But Benjamin Franklin and the third President of the United States, Thomas Jefferson, believed in education. They were disciples of education and wanted everyone to learn not only about the charters of freedom, but have a good, sound, round education. Next slide. If you look real closely at that, you'll see that they basically designed the education system that we have today, with the primary level, the secondary level, and the third level. As David said earlier, we're non-political, and I won't dare get into the politics of our country today. But at the bottom of the third level, there's something called culture of virtue. Now, now that I've said that, there's not much culture of virtue in Washington, D.C. today. We are split just about fifty-fifty right down the middle, and we don't follow the culture of virtue as diligently as our founding fathers followed the culture of virtue. Next slide, Mr. Manager. That's the Burke County Courthouse. There was a time when that was the western courthouse of the state of North Carolina, because it was the, it was in the wilderness, and it was out as far as, basically, as the state went. Standing on this very lawn at the original courthouse in Burke County, Vance and Mary Jo Patterson decided, we would like to take that experience that we had at the National Archives Building and bring it back to the children and future leaders of Burke County. And we set out to do that. Next slide. I helped Vance start the charters of freedom with a nonprofit. Next slide. The scope of the project was to design and build replicas of the charters of freedom and to display them in a central area open to the community 24/7 with high visibility. Next slide, Mr. Manager. We wanted to take that experience and duplicate it as closely as possible. Now, remember, if you will, when you toured the National Archives Building, you couldn't take a tape measure, you couldn't take a camera, you couldn't take anything. So basically, we have guestimated those dimensions. Now, our settings are based on markings on clothing of his wife. But we're pretty dag-on close with our settings. Next slide, Mr. Manager. When we build in beautiful Allegheny County, we will go down three and a half feet, and we'll put reinforced concrete that weighs over nineteen tons in the ground. Next slide. That's what it will look like after we have poured the initial concrete. Middle, or the bigger setting, is the Declaration, is the Constitution, the smaller settings are the Bill of Rights and the Declaration of Independence. Next slide. After we do that, we put in trays at the top that will hold the documents. Next slide. The documents weigh about sixty pounds. Now, I know that firsthand because I toted them, I carried them all over western North Carolina as we started this process. And believe me, they do weigh sixty pounds. That's engraved bronze, etched bronze, and over that, we put bulletproof glass. Now, we have changed the glass a couple of times, but the product that we're using today is what is used in high-rise construction. If you see a high-rise building that has glass exterior, that's the product that is used in that construction. Next slide. That's what it looked like when we finished the first one. The first charters of freedom outside of Washington, D.C. was in Burke County, North Carolina. Declaration of Independence on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the right. Next slide. Commissioned an artist to come up with an emblem that we could use on the setting. Eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. He's strong. He's defiant. He had the will of the founding fathers. The stars at the top represent the Articles of the Constitution, and the stars at the bottom represent the original proposed Bill of Rights. That will be on the front of your setting. Next slide. We put a time capsule at the back where we would like letters from you, perhaps the superintendent, other dignitaries within the county. We will put some copies of the newspaper in there so that it depicts what is happening in our country today, when the charters of freedom were built in Allegheny County. We hope, and we propose, that across this great nation, on September the seventeenth, 2087, that all these vaults will be open at the same time, the same day. Slide. I got to tell a quick story, and I'll be quick. The mayor of Morganton had been there for thirty years. I set up a meeting with the mayor, and Vance Patterson and I went to talk to him. He had his staff around the room, and we were all in a rather large conference room like this, like your beautiful boardroom. And Vance Patterson presented to Mel Cohen what we wanted to do at the historic courthouse. Finally, at the end of the meeting, Mel said, well Vance, where do you propose to put that thing? And Vance said, where that old dead tree is out there. Now, Mel Cohen had been the mayor for over thirty years. As a young mayor, he had planted that old dead tree. So his staff went, and everybody got real quiet, because they knew that Mel was just going to blow a fuse, and we were going to have a mess on our hands. Well, Mel Cohen was the first one to say, well, I guess that old tree's got to go. Now, you can see the difference in the before and after picture. You didn't see the flagpoles and all the beauty of the area, because the old dead tree was hiding all of that. But anyway, that's, I just wanted to share with you that it can be a beautiful setting, and it will be a beautiful setting in Allegheny County when we build the charters of freedom. Next slide. This one is in Burnsville. Next. That's Asheville. Next. This is Kokomo, Indiana, the first one we built out of Indiana limestone. Well, as an old Marine, John, I thought that Washington, D.C. was made out of concrete, but it's not, folks. It's mostly Indiana limestone and other types of limestone. This was our first setting of limestone. Next set. Next. This is Noblesville, Indiana. It was one of our first brick settings. Next. We want you to have a place that you can use often, that you can use for celebrations, for events, for Veterans Day, for Memorial Day, for other types of events. Next slide. That is Jacksonville, Illinois. That is Jacksonville, Illinois. In the downpour of rain, we had over 200 people standing out in, in the rain, very much like it was today of us coming up to beautiful Allegheny County. But we survived the rain and we had a wonderful day. Next slide. This is what it's all about, folks. We want schoolchildren and future leaders and to, to sit around with their teacher learning about the effort that these, that our great founders went to to create this great country. What a, what an ordeal it was to become this republic, this example of democracy, so that future leaders will understand that. Recognize old Ben Franklin? That's me. I've been known to dress up like Ben. My, my wife wants me to lose that profile, and she has me on a very strict diet, but I guess Dr. Streeter can take over for me because he seems to be going the other way. You're supposed to laugh, David. Okay. Anyway, I want to say a little bit about the group of students there. For some reason, the homeschoolers love what we do. I hope I can be, I'm, this old Marine's 72 years old. I heard a Marine earlier say he was 72 years old. So I hope this old Marine can live long enough to see the public schools in North Carolina as active as our homeschoolers are in learning about this great country and our founding documents and our founding fathers. Next slide. There are 3,143 counties, boroughs, parishes, and special districts across the country. Our goal over the next 10 years is to build as many of those as we can. Next slide. It's all about education, access, and community, and we're here today to, to re-engage with your beautiful county and to offer this as a gift to you. We, as of this day, and my prediction is it's about to change, in, in the next year or two, we will be spending tax dollars, but to this point, as treasurer of the corporation, I can tell you, we haven't spent tax dollars. And we're gift, we're prepared to gift to Alexander, excuse me, that was yesterday. We're prepared to gift to Allegheny County the charters of freedom, paid entirely with private dollars. Next slide. In the process, that's our national headquarters in Valdez, North Carolina, and there is a setting out front and a memorial to veterans in the back. We're spending just over a million dollars there. Now, if you look at the setting out front, there's a fifth pedestal. That's the first one that we've built, the fifth pedestal. Now, I get emotional, and if I do, forgive me. Again, that's just the old Marine in me coming out, but... Our founding fathers were brilliant men, and when they got stumped, they asked old Ben, and he generally had the answer, but many of them, even in their twenties, the founding fathers were brilliant, but they had God's hand on them. God was, there's no way that they could have produced these documents without some guidance. Now, they knew, they knew that the Constitution was not a perfect document. They knew that as society changed from time to time, there would need to be amendments. They were smart enough to put the capability of amending the Constitution within the document itself. Now, the fifth pedestal that you see out there has the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th amendments. Those are the civil rights amendments. I was at a presentation in, in Union County, and I got chewed up and spit out because this document had nothing in it for two council members. As much as I tried to explain to them, I failed. So I went back home and sat down with our founding, with our, with our founder, Vance Patterson and our whole staff, and we brainstormed and were able to, to produce the fifth pedestal, which is the, now. Just got back from Wilmington at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I got to talk to commissioners from Guilford County. Now, what happened in Greensboro, that's where World War is, that's the National Museum of Civil Rights, and I did get a little emotional, but I was able to talk to the, to the commissioners in the area where that all started and, and tell them that we had a, a finished product now. We don't put it in all settings. If the county would like to do that setting, we, we will, but as a, as a general rule, we don't, we will not be putting it in all settings. But in an environment like Greensboro, North Carolina, the home of the civil rights movement, that's where it belongs. And again, I did this without getting emotional this morning, but that's our part, and, and it's going to be beautiful when it's finished. Next slide, Mr. Manager. David, I want to turn it back over to you. Before I do, I want to secondly, I want to, for a second time, apologize to you. Commissioner John reminded me this morning that you're waiting on me, that I'm not waiting on you, and thank you so much. We look forward to in the very near future, building the charters of freedom in Allegheny County. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This slide is just an overview of, a broad outline of the way the project goes in sequence. As you can see at the top, there's a presentation to the local government, to the community, and near the bottom is a dedication date that's established when we're approximately 50% or more finished with construction, followed with a dedication ceremony that is quite a nice event for every community that you saw a couple of slides during the presentation that Ron gave. Then about five or six months later, after we collect certain mementos and things, we will have another dedication of the sealing of the time capsule. And during the construction process, and then during the dedication, and during the sealing of the time capsule, it's my job as the Director of Education to meet with people in the community such as teachers, principals, and the superintendent of the schools to let them know who we are, what we do, how we do it, that we are an educational organization, we have a multitude of educational, I mean, educational materials that we have designed, and I continue to design, and they are all complimentary. We do not charge for anything. Also, I'll let the superintendent know if someone can help me make contact with the superintendent, with him or her. A lot of times I have a hard time getting in to see them. They, they think we're trying to sell them something. We're not. Everything that we have, we give them, we give it away. Not only the education materials, but we also have funds that we will give the school system to help with transportation costs of taking buses of children and teachers to the setting for field trips, experiential field trips that you also saw there. I would also be working with the media that we not only announce when these things are coming up, but I write a series of articles once a month about the founding fathers and other people who made a significant difference around the civil, around the, I'm not civil war, the Revolutionary War era. And with that, they go into the paper once a month if they would so to choose to, to publish those. So that wraps up what we have, and we'll gladly take any questions and answer them the best that we can.
Last time y'all were here, the, the Veterans Committee, which makes recommendations to the county commissioners, selected a site at the Veterans Park. That was roughly in February of 2019. And also went to Jefferson to look at the, the displays. I've been looking for these pictures. I've been paying attention, but this display shows three separate monuments, the, or displays. The last photograph you showed showed four. There's a slight difference.
That's the, that's the civil rights pedestal.
This one is out of bricks.
Right.
And I think at one time, y'all had a proposal out of granite or something, but there was a difference in cost.
There's a significant difference. If we do a granite setting, we will have to raise about $65,000. We have, as, we have the money in hand to do a brick setting, and, and we can start very quickly on it, hopefully this fall. But if, if we do the granite setting, that, that's going to take us, working with you sometime, Commissioner, to, to raise the $65,000.
I think that, look, we would, I would think the county manager would have to look back. I can't remember if the board finally approved that site, but the board, that board at that time, we visited the site, then the Veterans Committee made the recommendation to the board, and then things sort of, COVID and everything went away. So I think we'd have to revisit to be sure that we approved the site. To the left of the sidewalk, there's a bench down there now where people sit, and we just need to verify that that's the correct place.
Commissioner Irwin, I, I agree with you 100%. That's, that's my memory as well, and we probably need to check with the clerk's help. We may need to check the records and make 100% sure of that.
Questions?
Not really. I do think the setting, I've seen it from places. I've seen some of the ones that are better than the ones we currently have, so.
It's my memory that we were just waiting on a memorandum of understanding that we had determined the site. We wanted to get your approval of the site. I believe that we, we recommended the bricks since we could get it done and it wouldn't be out of pocket, so I would love to see this move forward, get a memorandum of understanding, and hopefully turn dirt, get it done.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. I, I couldn't agree more. It, it's time that our organization, and I'll work with, with Manager Carter to, to get the paperwork done in the next week or two, and check the minute book, perhaps sign a new LOI. I don't think that the LOI ever got here. So what I'm telling you is we're back in the game and we're ready to go. I, I don't know how we got off track, but we did. I'm looking forward to coloring in Allegheny County on my, on our map to, to make it complete. I answer all your questions, Commissioner Luthman?
Thank you.
Okay.
This is great.
Well, I, it will be great when we do the dedication. We'll have a fun, fun time. We'll have some, some patriotic music, perhaps the school bands, a chorus group, someone to sing the, we have some mini cannons that we bring up and fire off. So it's, it's a wonderful celebration day to celebrate the charters of freedom in Allegheny County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, and I, I'm sorry it's taken us so long, but, but we're back in the game now, and, and let's get it done, okay? Mr. Manager, if we can have our thumb drive, we'll be out of your way. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
We'll call a five-minute recess right quick.
We'll call a five-minute recess right quick. We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Next order of business, financial update. Zepplin, Finance Director.
Morning. I've laid a report for everybody this morning in front of you. The approved budget, we are in the new fiscal year, so these are the new fiscal year numbers. The approved budget was $17,611,637. Year-to-date revenue, $3,154,527.87. Year-to-date expenditures, $2,187,121.36. Year-to-date revenue represents 17.9% of the total budget. Year-to-date expenditures represents 12.4%. And we are 12.5% into the year of the budget. Any questions about those numbers? Bank balance as of this morning, $9,355,431.14. And I did continue, I just went ahead and put the bank balance as of last year at this time and the year before, so you can kind of see, we're gradually improving the financial status of the county. Any questions about any of that? And the last number down there is just the net financials. That's just your revenue minus your expenditures, $967,406.51. We are in the midst of working with our new auditors to get those audited numbers. So hopefully the next time I have a report in front of you, we'll have an audited general fund balance for you. The second sheet is just an update on the sales tax for fiscal year '21. Those numbers stay a couple of months behind. So this is your fiscal year '21 number with the May and June revenue in there. And it's $1,193,318.44. I did highlight the $351,000 there. That's actually what we have in excess from last year, from what was budgeted. Budgeted was $842,068. But we brought in 351-plus thousand over that what was budgeted last fiscal year. Just wanted to highlight that. Any questions that I can answer this morning?
Just want to go back to page one. And I know that, April, you didn't read those bank balance numbers off.
Oh, I did not.
But I think those are pretty important numbers to disclose, if we could do that.
We sure can. Bank balance as of August 17, 2020, $5,716,322.55. Bank balance as of July 31, 2019, $2,655,184, excuse me, $184.59. We went from $19,2.6 million to $20,5.7 million to current date, $9.35 million.
It's a big improvement. Big improvement. Any questions, anybody?
No.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's $6.7 million, roughly, movement from
Next facilities update. Mr. David Spicer, Maintenance Director.
Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for an opportunity. We'd like to start out with our courthouse. And our courthouse, of course, our punch list has been completed. Stone Restoration came back and finished out the punch list, so all that has been completed. We are, however, still waiting on the roof. We have a contract signed, I think, and everything is, it's in progress. So we're working on getting that roof on the front part of the courthouse. And then we will take care of the demolition where it had been done in the stairways in the front and make that back like it's supposed to be. Our day mark building, work is still going on there. We have had some delays once again. Lowe's has delayed us from getting our carpet. I think they changed the date three times for delivery, and it's still not here. They said the end of last week, and we still have no carpet. So we're at the mercy of the shippers. So we're waiting on that to come. The COA building, again, it's being painted now, so that should be finished up pretty shortly. So all those repairs has been made to that building, and then the painting is being taken care of. Of course, 90 South Main is still a work in progress for a plan from the structural engineers. We're working with them in progress of making sure that that building is taken care of appropriately. So that's still in the works, and we'll bring those before the board as soon as we have all of those reports in. At our transfer facility, our loader's back up again and running, so it's doing good for right now. ACT, the meeting we had with them was productive. They have assured us that they're going to do their best to help take care of that loader and make sure that the processes of repairs and service is taken care of in an appropriate manner. So they're doing what they said they would do so far. They've been up here, they've been very punctual. So we're working towards that. The tipping floor, we're in the process right now of getting in information. And pricing, met with a contractor from Stevens Concrete Solutions there. They are specialized, they're specialists in tipping floors, primarily in concrete. They do a concrete which has an emery mixture, and that is only, they said they can go as little as one inch, but he likes to go inch and a half, two inches thick. So that's to cap off and to make our tipping floor more usable than what we have now. We're still, there's one more repair that will need to be made to our tipping floor now to make sure that it lasts a little while longer. We're really just band-aiding injuries to our floor right now to make things work until we can do better. So we're getting prices on that. We're getting prices on the temporary tipping floor to be established down there where the white goods are stored. That tipping floor will be taken care of, but as soon as we get our bids and quotes in on that, then we'll bring that to make a decision. Everything else is pretty good shape. There is a few other buildings. This building in particular needs some repairs, so that's, we're waiting on contractors. They're coming. So all that's in progress, and we're making steps to improve on that. There was a cement pad there at the jail where it was damaged by earthquake, and we are moving forward with getting that repaired, or replaced, actually. So we're working towards it.
Status on the environmental issues at the BDC Equipment Room?
I'm not aware of any environmental issues at the BDC.
We don't have a thermostat in there. It's getting too warm. We were supposed to put money in the budget this year to get it done. We're now in the new budget year. Have we got it scheduled?
Going to be working on that project over the next 60 days. Yes, sir.
Recycling?
Still waiting on the delivery of the compactor. Of course, cement's in, electrical's done, everything's in place. All of our grant, everything's up to date on it. Our annual reports is sent in. I've actually had to do two annual reports, so they're sent in. One has been accepted. I'm still waiting on the acceptance of the other. But the recycling is, they're pretty much on schedule. So hopefully by the end of September, first of October, hopefully we'll have that thing here and have it up and going. So working towards it.
Pretty much on time, on our timeframe to
Yes, sir.
have it in.
Yes, sir. And that was my expectations of what I thought we could do, so.
We appreciate everything, buddy.
Sure. Thank you.
David mentioned the roof at the courthouse. And we have an agreement with REI, the engineering group. We have a contract with Tecta, who is supposed to be beginning the project. It's like anything else right now, materials seem to be one of the hindrances in getting projects to move forward. I will tell you that up until about the beginning of last week, I've kind of leaned on, I guess it's an appropriate word, leaned on the engineer. The end of last week, I began to press the engineer, and I hope that it doesn't come to where I pushed the engineer. But that project, we're getting into the fall of the year, and it needs to be moved up on the schedule. The other item is the tipping floor that we talked about. In order to, and this is my opinion on it, but in order to effectively fix the, what I'm calling the primary facility there is tipping floor, we need to construct a temporary tipping floor, because this repair work is not an overnight fix. It's weeks and such a timeframe. So as David indicated, we're getting numbers for that temporary fix. And that temporary fix does more than just allow us to use it during that facility's improvements. It gives us a lot of flexibility. So that, in my estimation, would be our first approach. That may be what occurs, hopefully, before the end of the year. And then come spring, maybe we can work on at least resurfacing the existing. I will tell you that, I believe that tipping floor is in adequate size-wise for the volume of waste you receive and the ability to move your equipment around. So we're also looking at, probably in the next budget cycle, of expanding that tipping floor area to accommodate and allow for volume that you're
Is the repair of the floor timed sensitive before cold weather? Is that something that could?
That's what I'm saying, is I think that we can do it probably in the spring, probably the last of the third quarter going into the fourth quarter on the actual floor, but have the temporary in place prior to that.
Questions? Thank you, Dave. Old Edwards Fire Ground update, Recreation Director.
Morning.
Morning.
Don't have a lot for you on Fairgrounds update. We did get to sign in, and it will be installed. First, we've got to do some training, myself, probably Aaron Ray, and maybe somebody else from the Fairgrounds Committee to learn how to operate that thing, and then they'll come and install it. Had the demolition derby last weekend on the 6th. That was a success. The estimates from the fire department, I think, were around 2,000 people or so. Everybody seemed happy, and so that's Fairgrounds update.
Same time. Anybody have any questions about the Fairground update? Went on down to general business, fairground applications and fees?
It was last meeting, I gave each one of y'all an application for the fairgrounds use. If y'all have any questions or concerns in regards to this?
I was looking, scanning through here and down there, first page, number six, the PA amplifier. It's 11 o'clock. Is that a good timeframe? It need be a little later than that, because some events go past 11.
Mr. Chairman, we moved that restriction some time ago.
Okay.
It shouldn't even be in there.
I must have some Okay.
It was, if it was removed, then this is the only application that I know of, so it just must not have been taken off, which was prior to me.
Bobby and I both pointed that out at the last one, that some time ago we had removed that restriction.
Any questions?
Looking at, are we going to go page by page, Mr. Chairman? Or do we want to go with our individual concerns?
Individual concerns, I'd say. Everybody should have read over this.
The fairgrounds, the last sheet that you gave us, Timeline for Fairgrounds Use Application. Lost Springs Auxiliary is no longer doing this. We've got a concessionaire that's coming in, so that's going to have to be put in there. The Lions have advised us that they have aged out and will not be able to do the concessions, so we need to remove that. The list of all food and beverage vendors The list of all food and beverage vendors, 30 days, that, I believe that's good. And 45 days after event, revenue and expense reports due to the Recreation Department, I believe that that needs to be significantly lowered. If we have someone that comes in and puts on a private event, they could be long gone before we even started looking at the funds. One question that I have had constantly, whenever an application is filled out for an event at the fairgrounds, where does that money go?
Fairgrounds fund, and that...
Is that county, are those funds coming to the county or the fairgrounds committee?
County, but it goes into the fairgrounds fund for the operation cost.
It's, separate entities here now. The fairgrounds committee, they were collecting funds at one time, they are no longer collecting funds.
Check is written to Allegheny County.
I'm sorry?
The check is written to Allegheny County.
Okay, good. So those funds come in there. And just for the edification, the people that's been calling me and asking those questions, are we still, if it's going to be an event of over 500, we're charging $1,000. If it's less than 500, we charge $500, plus the other, the other things, unless they're a 501(c)(3), charitable event, how does that work?
If you look at the second page in that packet that you have, I mean, it's got the fee schedule broken down. Whether it's profit or nonprofit and then whether it's by the day or by the week.
Okay. So this is what we are going by right now?
Correct.
Here is the paperwork for, now this may not be a related subject, but for the campgrounds. Do we have paperwork for anyone that wants to rent a space at the campgrounds?
This time, no. It's just, I write them a receipt for payment.
So we have no written guidelines on how to hook up or the fees or anything of that nature?
No.
So we were waiting for a document to be provided by the other people, correct?
Page two of your packet, under, it's got a fee structure at the bottom. The profit and nonprofit, you see that, those two columns? If you look about, I don't know, one, two, three, four down, you'll see camper hookups. There's a fee structure identified there.
And I think what he's saying is just for general use rules of campers.
Check-in, checkout times?
Is that what you're referring to, is like a general use rules?
And this is probably out of order because we are supposed to be having a working document being worked up by TDA Fair Grounds and the county, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So that should probably put in there, and I am out of order in questioning that. So my apologies, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? What else, any questions? Bobby?
Heather Scott's got a comment.
I've got a few. So on that very first page of the application, under number two, I think we had discussed this before, where instead of it saying controlled substances, you know, which would be prohibited, I think it would be, we should say, illegal. And then that would cover, you know, any issues with, instead of it being controlled, I don't, I think it would be a broader term just to say any illegal substances. The other thing was on number four, where it specifically, I think it's one, two, three down, three lines down, and it says such action either by Allegheny County or the fairgrounds, Allegheny Fairgrounds, Inc., I think that should say the Rec. Department because the facility is being operated, it's a county facility and it's being operated through the Rec. Department. So I think we should reference, instead of the fairgrounds committee, it should be the Rec. Department. The other one was, now that we have a vendor, so under number nine, since we have a vendor, we should probably change this language so that it would be understood by anybody applying to use the facility, that they're not allowed to compete with that vendor and duplicate food. That way they're not under any impression that they can still come out there and do what they want, even though they've applied, there still are going to be some restrictions in regards to that, so there won't be a question. And if you go to the last page, that would also be under fairgrounds application where it's talking about the timelines, where it says 30 days from the event. I think we need to mention there again that, you know, Allegheny County has contracted with a vendor and there shouldn't be duplication, so that anybody looking through this application is going to understand that we shouldn't, there shouldn't be any competing with that vendor as we've contracted. In the second page, if you go under, let's see, under where it says liabilities assumed by user, there's a last sentence that says by signing below, you're stating that you have read and understood the rules of, it should be, instead of referencing the Allegheny Fairgrounds, Inc., that would be either Allegheny County or the recreational department's rules or whatever we have in regards to the use of the facility, but that's not coming from the fairgrounds now, it's coming either from the county or the Rec. Department who's in charge. Those are just a couple of things that I saw. Just want to make sure that we're not going to have an issue with anybody duplicating food with somebody who is paying to use that facility and that anybody who applies, they understand that they can't, even a different organization can't duplicate food. I think that's pretty important, too. That was, that was a few things that I saw.
One other thing for Heather, number seven, there again it references the fairgrounds, should that be the Rec. Department also?
I would agree, yeah. Any reference that it has to Allegheny County Fairgrounds, Inc. should be the Rec. Department or corresponding, if it needs to be Allegheny County, but I think the Rec. Department is the appropriate reference because the Rec. Department is in charge of the facility.
I'll defer to you, but I just have a few questions. Some of them are just in general and some of them are representative of this application pack. That's okay. And I'll make it simple, page one, number one says that you've got to submit your application no less than 75 days. We're talking about the end page with 30 days and 45s and all that. 75 days is a whole lot of time to submit something. Now, I have no idea how, I mean, some of these annual events, I know that's pretty easy to do, but some of these other ones, I mean, do we want to leave it at 75 days? To me, that's, that's a question.
One of the reasons this form was for the, was used by the Allegheny Fairgrounds, Inc. That was a requirement that they put in there mainly because the health department, if there was going to be food and every, just about every event had food, the health department needed 45 days notification so that they could schedule their inspectors to come in. And I think that, you know, if you look up there in the bold written statement verifying net profit and payment shall be submitted within 45 days and things of this nature, we're all over the place as far as timelines. Just about every page has got a different timeline.
I think that's something we ought to, you know, make it uniform. And then these are all just thoughts, but second one, you know, if you look at three, then it talks about the utilization is by permission upon proper application. Well, according to number one, if you don't get your application in 75 days ahead, you hadn't followed that. So we're, we're running this sequence. The big thing that I want to just ask, you know, we've talked about this thing for, well, about all the time that I've been here. I don't recall there being a direction, and if I have missed it, please tell me. Who is now deciding what events take place at the fairgrounds? Because, you know, I know what job descriptions say, I know what the process has been, but for Cole's sake, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to upset anyone here listening, is it, is it Cole's responsibility, because if it is, it doesn't say it in his job description? If it's the governing body's decision, then we need to make that effective. Or are we still using the, and Cole, please correct me if I'm wrong, if an event comes in that allows time for the fairgrounds board to consider it, they, they have that approval process?
Correct.
And if it comes in kind of off-sequence, then that falls on you?
Correct.
That, I don't understand that. And I can't, I can't progressively move forward until I know what are we, what are we doing with that?
What's your recommendation?
Not a question. It's basically, you know, this is a question that we've been asking all along. We had a work session. At a work session, I came out of the work session with understanding that the county was running the fairgrounds and that the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, Inc. was an advisory board. And lo and behold, we got people that are scheduling events, county didn't even know about it. And I refer to the COVID shots. We show up, we set up, and all of a sudden we find that someone has scheduled an event, that there was nothing on an event calendar, and instead of giving COVID shots, another event went on. So I'll be quite honest with you, I don't trust my memory. I don't believe that we have run the risk of making someone mad and stating that it is county property and that we are going to run it advised by certain organizations that have traditionally advised us. It is something that we are going to have to make a decision on and stand by. We cannot vacillate. We've had situations where events had been scheduled, we didn't know it. We've got cattle up there. We're cleaning hooves. Ask the Parks and Recreation Director who scheduled it. I don't know, there's something going on up there. It's either lead, follow, or get out of the way.
I just think we need to have clarification. If, if, if one entity's doing it, one individual's doing it, or a collection, the way it's being done, I'm not saying it was wrong because I wasn't here when it was initiated. It's confusing, it's hard to keep track of, and I think we could simplify the process.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if it's confusing to the chairman of the, the county manager, what about the general public? They are confused also.
That's one of my questions, but going back and this, when we redid the Parks and Recreation's job description, I was under the impression that the Parks and Recreation was to make and keep a calendar and approve events. Now apparently that's not in his job description about approving events.
With the exception of how I understand it to be when it comes in, in odd sequence to the meetings, the rest of it, he does that.
There, I'll repeat what John said and I'll repeat what you said, it's a confusing situation. You've got two different entities that approve or take applications for events. I think that it should be one person that takes the application. There should be a set of guidelines as to what events are acceptable, what events aren't acceptable. This is probably falls under the legal of what we can or what we should be able to rent the facility for. There's groups out there that probably we don't want or that we can't have in this county. And there's, would need a set of guidelines. When you go to the event that we're having on Main Street here in Heritage Week, they asked the nerve application, what do you, what your organization does, what are you selling, whether it be pottery, whether it be food, whether it be a nonprofit. I think those things need to be clarified in some type of application form. And that form to me, and those applications, should go through Cole. He's, he's a full-time employee. People can pick up the phone and call and ask for an application and they can find out quite quickly from whoever's in charge of Park and Recreation, whether they fall under those guidelines and what the fee structures will be. I think these fee structures need to be looked at, especially, you know, I just, one thing I look at is the deposit on the tractor for profit, nonprofit. Look at the liability that that tractor carries for different groups that are renting it. And as I've mentioned to you before, I've seen two, three people riding on that tractor that is a total liability to this county. If something happens to somebody there, it falls back on us. And there's, there's just numerous things that I think that you could work out if this board would give you directions on what this board is looking for to come out of the fairgrounds. That's what we pay you for. I think, my opinion is, Mr. Carter's looking for directions from the board.
I agree. I thought that was what took place that day here about a month ago when we put the committee together in a way, you know? I thought that's what took place, that about a month ago we had that meeting, we put Cole and Mr. Carter and Hunter Mason all together, and he was speaking for the county in which we could give him directions.
I mean, I, I thought that was too, but I think there's some confusion from what I've heard from people on that committee. And then I think that it was asked a couple meetings ago, is everyone who uses the fairgrounds, either a nonprofit or a profit, are they charged for using that fairgrounds? And I think Cole said that everybody was.
Now, the question was, did everybody fill out an application? The, the question was not asked about funds. And again, I can't speak for in the past, but this is just another question that we have to answer going forward, something what I would consider in-house, like the Extension Office, for example. That's in-house, that's educational. Should we charge the Extension Office to use the facility?
The fees and, the fees to run the fairgrounds, and I get what you're saying about educational, different opportunities, but almost any event comes by there, somebody can say somehow it's educational. I'm just not sure that not everyone who uses it should pay, there should be a minimum at least for the electric, for the water, for just the wear and tear.
Let me take the word "educational" out of it. Somebody like an in-house entity like Extension Office, would we charge them?
I don't know if they have a... I don't know if they have a budget that covers things like this, that they have money to pay for something.
For me, I mean, just good faith, working hand in hand, I mean, I don't think that we would charge them, but-
There again, I think that's for this committee or the steering committee, but they need, Mr. Carter needs some directions from the board.
I can answer the question about the availability within the Extension Office's budget. I talked to Amy Lucas last week. They do not have any funding for that ability. And if that became, you know, something that had to happen, the short end of it is, they're going to turn around and ask the county to provide those funds so that you can give it to them and they can give it back to you. But there is no current funding mechanism for that use.
And over the years, I think the budget for those committees, the state was paying, at one time, forty percent, or sixty percent and forty. Now it's reversed, the county's picking up-
All of it.
The biggest, or all of it.
Yes, sir.
So the state has backed away from doing a lot of the support. And I get the educational part, but there's still a wear and tear that the citizens, that we wind up, taxpayers, wind up paying for. Now, whether we want to sponsor three events a year or ten events a year that are educational, I think that would come from a recommendation from your steering committee.
Mr. John? I'm really not concerned about the revenue because it's basically, the county's going to be paying itself the way that we're, the way that we're going. The big thing in my mind is, we must schedule, and that means that there must be one entity that is handling that schedule saying yes and no, so that we can maintain control out there.
It's for clarification, and it's not in my job description. If you want to add it, we can add it, I guess. But to my knowledge, since I've been here in this short time of two and a half months, nobody else has accepted applications for the use of the fairgrounds. It's came to me. It may not have came in time for me to take it in front of the Fairgrounds Committee, but the application did come to me, and to my knowledge, nobody else-
Why are you saying you're taking it to the Fairgrounds Committee? You're running it, why are you taking it to another committee?
Right, but I'm just saying, nobody else is receiving applications. Because that was Bobby-
No, we've been caught between, we've been caught between a cliff and a daggone boulder rolling down the hill because whenever we had, get off the interstate, here we are, we're advertising, and it's all over Facebook that if you want a, if you want a booth at the fairgrounds, contact me. Did not recognize that they were with the Fairgrounds Committee, Allegheny County, or anything else. So people are saying, who's getting, who's getting the money? We were caught whenever, this was prior to Cole assuming his position, so the county didn't have anyone to take these applications and do things. Now, before, we had some, Parks and Recreation were, was doing that for the fairgrounds. But, you know, if the county's going to take control, the county takes control. We set the schedule in my mind, and that way, we have one person doing it. We know who to go to, we know who to schedule with, and whenever there's something going on up there, we know who to go and ask if they have indeed filled out a request for it. Now, for the Extension Agency or someone like that that's coming in, that's doing educational programs, I don't, personally, I don't think we should be charging. But they've got to get it on the schedule, because if we don't know that they're on the schedule, we're going to have conflicts. And believe me, I look like the north end of a southbound jackass standing there, getting ready to direct traffic on the day that we were supposed to be giving COVID-19 shots, and the Health Department comes up and says, we can't use the facility because somebody else scheduled it.
Going forward-
They're going to be responsible for it. We will run it. And that doesn't mean we take it to a committee, in my mind. Now, I'm one vote, the others may not agree with that, but that is the way that you stop confusion.
You've got all the applications since you've been employed, Parks and Recreation.
Since I've been here, yeah.
And I assume that just in good cooperation, you pass on to the Fairgrounds Committee what's come in, what's lined up, you know?
So that they can recommend safety features and things of that nature, Mr. Chairman, I believe.
Help me. Okay. Cole's doing what has historically been done. Where my confusion is, Cole, help me out. I don't know how many of these events in two and a half months that you have had to approve because of the timing, or how many have went to the Fairgrounds Board for their, and I'm going to use approval. I don't know.
One?
One. Because we haven't had a lot of events first and foremost.
Me too, I'd have to think about it, but one.
But what I'm saying is, if we're taking that, and this is no disrespect to any group, but if we're taking that approval process to the Fairgrounds Committee in that instance, it didn't come here, that I remember. I mean, my recollection is, once it was approved by the Fairgrounds Committee, then the event moved forward. Is that, is that correct?
That's what we passed on, or talked about.
But talked about advisory. We determined what advisory was. We had a big discussion about that. I know that I asked the question, does this body want to be involved in every approval of every event out there? And honestly, I think there was some mixed reactions to that. Only way you fix some of that confusion that maybe I have, and maybe Cole has, or maybe anybody else has, is somebody is tasked with that approval. Is it going to be this body? Is it going to be that individual? Is it going to be the Fairgrounds Board? Whomever it is, to me, it's not in black and white yet. I've got my eyes wide open and my ears open. What do we need to do to make it simple?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would offer that, according to what Cole has seen initially, is all the applications, as I'm aware of in my time here, has come to the Recreation Department. And they've only been taken to the Fairgrounds, Inc. Board, basically as an advisory. That they're aware of what it is, and if there's any questions, any needs for safety, or let's just say that Cole doesn't recognize maybe that there's an event that doesn't need to happen before another event because of the grounds being tore up, that kind of thing. And one time, when I talked to the advisory group, to ask if they had ever denied, or that they were in the role of authority, but that they, you know, suggested not to have one, nobody, I don't think, could ever recollect that. It was just that, maybe not this time, but move it after this other event because of the grounds being tore up. So I think really, the work that's been done, and the way it's been done, the authority has been with the direction and the control of the Recreation Department, in tandem with the Advisory Committee, just, as I say, just having their input to make sure that, with a lot of history there, they might pick up on some needs.
It could be my lack of understanding, but when you presented this one event, was there a vote taken to have it?
Yes, I mean, it's, I'd have to look back at the minutes, but I don't know if it was an official vote or if it was just everybody agreeing to it.
I'm not putting you on the spot, Cole, I don't do that. But was it your decision to have it, or was it you recommending to the-
Oh, it was not my decision to have it. It was just me, basically, taking it and presenting it to the Advisory Committee, to the Fairgrounds Committee. And they say, they would say yes or no. I mean, I didn't, I didn't make the decision to have the event.
Or to not have it.
Or to not have it.
But any decision, you've only had one opportunity to interact with them in that manner.
I would consider an event that would need, yes.
And was their, their results any different than what you would have offered?
I just wondered.
I was on that committee for the first three years. I remembered distinctly that we had a volunteer fire department came in, they wanted to do a mud sling. At that time, they would come in, at Parks and Recreation, make the application in at the board meeting. At that time chaired by Mr. Brown, he would bring it up, and he would say, do we approve or disapprove? At this one meeting, disapproved. The reason being, because in the previous mud sling, rocks had been thrown from the arena and were striking people standing in line at the concession stand. Now, to get around that, the volunteer fire department went out, and they purchased screening and various other appliances to go up to put up so that mud would, and rocks would not strike anybody that was around the concession stand. They paid for it. That was the only way that they could get it on there. Now, for three years, we approved, sitting on that Fairgrounds Commission, we said yea or nay. Now, the only one that really strikes me was that one, and we worked around it because they went, and if memory serves me correct, they spent over fifteen hundred dollars so that they could get barriers to put up so that they could have that event. Now, this is where, whenever you look at some, an advisory committee, to me, this is an advisory whenever they look on the schedule. And there's a mud sling, an advisory committee would not look at it, it would be scheduled, and they would come in and say, hey, Cole, we've had some problems with rocks hitting people at the concession stand, make sure that they put their barriers up. Now, the county's got those barriers. We took control of them. But as far as yea and nay, that's the county. Now, if the Fairgrounds Committee feels that it is an unsafe situation and they object to it, that's when we get involved, and it should be brought to us as commissioners. Because you've got two bodies that are in conflict at that time, and the buck stops right here. I look at it in a chain of command capacity. Be aware also that for six months, we couldn't authorize the payment of any of the bills for the Fairgrounds Committee because we didn't have a quorum. Mr. Brown took it upon himself, against the bylaws, to authorize payment of the bills that were coming in. That was a problem that we were having at that time. We could not get a quorum to have a committee to even authorize the payment of the bills. Mr. Brown took it upon himself, authorize events because we didn't have a quorum to hold an event due to vote, and we had things that were coming in at the last minute. So, you know, it is something that, it's biting us into six o'clock position again because it's been a handshake and a gentleman's agreement in the past, that things are going to operate the way that they did. Unfortunately, the gentlemen have aged out that made those agreements, and now everybody assumes, and we certainly know what assume means. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with John. I think one person needs to take all the applications. That just makes good common sense to me. And so far as the Extension and the 4H and those people using that, I don't have a problem with that. One, none whatsoever, with no fees. You know, that's a good cause and a very good, very good reason. But I do think our steering committee, the buck stops, the buck stops here. But I think the steering committee we set up could be involved with settling some of these issues as we go along. I mean, consensus of the board is, but kind of where I see it, is those four individuals could do a lot of that, and when it comes a big issue, it needs, it needs to come right here, you know?
About it?
I just don't know if this has answered any questions for Mr. Carter.
That's as can.
About the steering committee and the responsibility that the board wants to put on the Rec Department or the commissioners. But we, we as commissioners, I think it's sometimes, like in our tax, when we approve or disapprove, somebody's taxes, pump fees, all of that winds up coming to us at some point. I think that with Mr. Carter, the committee, they can come up with a set of plans that Cole can go by, and if there's a disagreement with somebody who wants to have an event and you turn it down, then the final say would be, I guess, an arbitration, or they would make their case to the board. Have an advisory committee with the Fairgrounds Group. I think if Cole gets the application, it would be nice to let them know what's going on, that this application has been filed, I approved it, or I disapproved it, or these are the modifications about food, about whatever that event's going to entail. And then if somebody doesn't like the Rec Department's decision, then let them come to you, you come to the board.
That's what I was trying to say. I mean, it goes to that committee, and then it comes which direction, you know?
I'm not going to make it any longer, but to me, it all comes down to who makes that first initial determination on the event. And that's, that's easy, but I don't know that everybody knows that. And if that's the direction that this board wants to do, Cole certainly needs to know that. And we need to know that, and the Fairgrounds Group needs to know that. There's a whole host of people that this impacts. If we're good with that, let's go, because that provides a direction. And then this steering committee and all these other things that we talked about has a way to maneuver, it has a way to go, it has a direction. But until there's a decision made that, and I'm just using Cole because that was a reference, if he's the fella that is making the decision initially on the event happening or not, we need to set that so we can move forward.
I just a motion, Mr. Chairman?
For the-
Before you do that, do your thoughts, Cole, on that very subject.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I mean, that's essentially, I mean, that's the way it is now. But in a chain of command sense, is it me, and then who do I go to after that?
Right, I get it.
But-
Sorry, the interruption, I just had that question I wanted to do.
It is something that we do need to clarify to protect that young man right there, because he's got to know that we are going to stand behind him whenever he makes a decision. Got to be black and white.
For the motion.
I make a motion that the decision process, the decision for events resides with the Parks and Recreation Department.
A motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Further discussion?
I think that it should be noted, too, that his calendar that he keeps is the end, the, that is the end stopping place. We'll have to check with you.
On one calendar, and you run it?
On one calendar that you operate.
Motion, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Bye-bye.
Also, and I think it was mentioned, but if somebody comes to you and you deny it, it's just like any other county function, it can come to the, appealed to the Board, you know, the public would have that right to do that, so.
One, right there. Call a recess till 3:15.
3:15.
Can we do that?
You have to set a time. Where do you want that?
3:15. 1:00. As long as this other.
The edification of the audience, we have a work session beginning at 13:30 hours, anticipated that it will last two hours, after which we would go back into regular session.
But we have to set.
We like a good bit, yes, so let's go with 3:00 when we reconvene. Reconvene, this may. We'll be in recess till 3:00.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.